Will call please.
Mrs. Foley.
Here.
Mr. Lydic here. Mr. Roberts. Mrs. Tresker.
Here.
Mr. Welch here.
Okay, we did have a special request for a public participation, so I would like to invite our guests to go ahead and speak during this three minutes that we're allowing, if that's okay with everything with the you can proceed with that. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for letting me come in. My name is Dominic Sponey and I'm a lieutenant with the Perry Joint Fire District. For those of you that don't know, we have a levy coming up on May third. It's an additional levy. It's a three mil levy and it'll generate 1.1 million dollars for the fire district. You know, cost of homeowner, a hundred five dollars per hundred thousand dollars. That breaks down to eight dollars and seventy-five cents a month and twenty seven, twenty-eight cents per day. It's to continue the levels of services that we provide to the community. It's not going to take that or anything, it's just to continue. So why is an additional levy needed? As most of everybody from the school board knows that the losses from the power plant have really hurt us. Over the last 12 years, we have lost a cumulative loss from our taxes coming in. It's about 6.5 billion dollars. In 2017, we were notified of a significant devaluation. This was about the time the plant went into bankruptcy. In a two-year period, we lost 547,000 dollars. So our goal has always been to improve our services without raising taxes. And one of the biggest things that we've been able not to do is do that. In the last 20 years, we've done a point five mil increase in the last 20 years. Efforts have also been made to operate within our budget and we've used utilized grants very well. Since 2003, we've been awarded over 1.8 million dollars in grants to help with training, equipment and updating that. I do have a pamphlet I'll hand out to you guys, there's more information than that. We have a citizens for Perry Fire Facebook page where there's more information there. There's also a QR code on the back that you can scan with your phone if you'd like a sign in your yard, if you live within on behalf of Chief McDonald, the rest of the members of Perry Fire District. We really do appreciate the relationship that we have with the school. I think it accomplishes things for both of us and that's keeping the students, staff safe here. For a lot of needs come in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, can I just add one thing? Because during that, you said you lost 500 some thousand dollars. During a period of time, I think, I think ours was like two and a half million dollars. But what a lot of people don't realize is that what that was during the devaluation of the public tangible called class three revenues and evaluation. It doesn't impact the, the residential tax rates. So when they, when they get decreased on the, on the power plant, which is what happened, it doesn't increase the revenues that we get in other places. And so it's just a straight loss in revenues that, that you would get or we would get.
Yeah, no, you guys.
And so there's no way to recover that.
More, but it's, yeah, it's a burden on but we want to try to keep providing a service that we do so.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Any other public participation? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we will, we will move on, thank you. Dr. Thompson, superintendent's report.
Thank you. Under personnel, we have approval appointment of pit musicians. Under personnel B, approval appointment 2021, 22 athletic supplemental. Board has asked to approve the employment of injured or listed for the 2021, 22 athletic supplement position rate of pay indicated pending successful completion of all required paperwork and certification training. As recommended by the superintendent athletic director, C, personnel approval appointment, general casual daily subs certified teaching. The board has approved certified general subs listed for 2021, 22 school year pending successful completion of all the employment paperwork certification trainings as recommended by the assistant superintendent, superintendent. Under D approval, board policy first reading. The board's asked to consider the following advice. Board policy as a first reading for future action as recommended by the local superintendent draft policies available for review. Basically, in Dr. Malchuski's fine work, she was going through policies and and noticed that we still had in one of our policies for grading reporting that we were going to send out report cards every six weeks. We don't do that any longer and how we have at the campus and people can have their, they can see their, their students accumulated grading at any point in time. So we're just asking to strike out that one line in that policy. And so that's all that is. And that, we also have a memory and agreement, O C. The board is asked to approve the memory and agreement between Perry Board of Education, O C Local 367, regarding work during remote learning and salary schedule step adjustment as recommended by the local superintendent chief financial officer. And this concludes my superintendent's special meeting report.
Do I have any kind of motion?
Throw a second.
Questions?
I just want to make a comment on the MOA with O C. It, it really has two components. The first one was, we had an expired piece which dealt with how we handle staff if there were to be a shutdown for COVID or something like that. And the second piece of that is the, when we, when we extended out the contract, this, this makes the adjustment as to where employees who are working outside of their classification of summertime would go. And so it actually brings them to, to what our starting rate for those employees would be. Because it wasn't covered in the, when we did that extension.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Anyone else? Okay. We'll call please.
Mr. Lydic.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mrs. Tresker.
Yes.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mrs. Foley.
Yes. Let's check a line. I'm sorry, I would like you to do your addendum.
I'll hold up for a minute.
Personnel acceptance of resignation, the board is asked to accept the resignation of the individual noted from the petition listed as recommended by the local superintendent and assistant superintendent. And B approval resolution for Chief McDonald, the board is asked to approve the following resolution recognizing Fire Chief James McDonald, recipient of 2022 Ohio Fire Service Distinguished Service Award and inductee of the, in the Ohio Fire Service Hall of Fame as recommended by the local superintendent and upon approval of this resolution, we will invite Chief McDonald to our next review to be part in the honor which he so deserves. This concludes my superintendent's special meeting addendum report.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Say it.
Any questions? Hey, roll call please.
Mrs. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Lydic.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mrs. Tresker.
Yes.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Okay, back to our regular agenda.
Thank you. First item I have is approval expenditures. Board's asked to approve expenditure to curriculum associates for 22,872.50 for iReady software in the 22, 23 school year at Perry Elementary School. As recommended by the local superintendent and assistant superintendent. Funding for iReady, we brought in from the 21st century grant. Who will expenditure, the board's asked to approve expenditure, amount of 99,900 to CDWG for 150 Acer Chromebooks and education upgrades as recommended by the chief financial officer and director of research technology. This is a staff refresh. The existing, I think, staff places are about five or six years old. Betty Jo, is that, is that right? So they're beyond their useful life. Under contracts agreements, the board's asked to approve agreement with OSBA for a customized board number workshop as recommended by the local superintendent. NMD Ohio School Bus Bids, the board's asked to approve resolution regarding OSC school bus bids as recommended by the chief financial officer and director of transportation. This we typically purchase a bus on an annual basis. We're going, we're going back to a November one resolution for House Council. This allows us to get some of the existing buses from the last bid before the increases come because they had a couple buses left without having to pay for the, the new pricing that's going to be out in this next bid. So that's what I have on the first, or the
We. Have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any questions? Yes, I do. Yes, so you said we purchased a bus every year.
Typically do, yes. So, so the life expectancy of a bus is about 12 to 15 years. We run maybe 16 routes or so. And so we, we have special.
16 buses roughly.
That, well, our fleet is probably like 20 bus gives spares and we have field trips and everything else, but the ones that are operational that run every day are about 16. So we try to buy one every year. And then as we have a need for a special needs bus or something is, is out of the ordinary, a second one every three, four, five years. So we're on a one bus year. And that kind of keeps the fleet just as a, at a steady pace without having to be a big expense of five buses a year.
And they're being purchased through consortium for
So Ohio Schools Council is consortium about 200 school districts in the state of Ohio. They do a bus bid. And in participating in this one, they got pricing on the existing buses that came out. And if we were to take that bus bid on our own now and go out, it would cost maybe eight to 10,000 dollars more. So we're catching it under their November resolution when we're five months late, but we could get a bus under those specs.
Want to comment on the OSBA contract, you know, we've been trying to get the board retreat on the books and April 28th has been a day that we market. With Emily Speedback being too busy, we were able to reach out to Sarah Clark, who I've seen a number of times. She's maybe not quite Emily Speedback, but she's really, really good. And I want to thank Kippee, got a chance to work with her over Zoom and then put together what I think's a pretty solid agenda. And so she'll be coming in with, for her herself and potentially a couple of her team members to go through some, some, some board governance things on that 12th to 28th. And we're thinking three to five session at Independence High School. And so that should, that's worked out really well.
Yeah, we had originally thought it would be earlier in the day. But now we can adjust it and they could make it three o'clock in the afternoon, which is good for those of you that, or all of us that maybe want to work and have the day and not get there till three, so like buy some time. And then we also have that evening, this banana bananas we're invited to, so hopefully you are going to attend. Have a board retreat finally. Thank you, Dr. Thompson. So do we have any other questions? We'll call please.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mrs. Tresker.
Yes.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mrs. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Lydic.
Yes.
I have an item on the addendum. And it is under contracts agreements, the board's actual proves the adjusted price of 75,411 dollars to H and M landscaping contract 2022 season as recommended by chief financial officer and director of operations. And again, this is a, a contract adjustment that we needed to make because of the absorbent changes that they have experienced in labor costs, fuel costs, yeah, equipment costs. And they just really came to us and said that they, they, they can't do it for the price that we had. We walked through, we did take some additional, additional vendors. Nobody could do it for this price even though it's higher than we had anticipated. But it's, it's still the best price that you get.
Have a motion?
So move.
Any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Lydic.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mrs. Tresker.
Yes.
Mr. Welch. Mrs. Foley.
Yes. The end of the addendum and now we are on to our work session items. So I think we have Mr. Rockwell here for a follow-up. If there's a discussion we need to have regarding the weight room, we talked about a few months back.
Yep. Ready for you.
Late reading?
Yes, late reading for you to take call.
Well, you say take call, but I, I think we want to come to something.
I'm just kidding.
Okay.
It's all laid out.
Please don't take it all the read.
No, I'm just joking, we're not taking anything off. We're getting to it. Hopefully the process here tonight, so. And so I'll just run this, I'll run through this with you here real quick. Obviously, I tried to break it up into sections because that's, that's how we had to sort of process this thing. I want to thank Jim Smith, Mike Christinger for their work on this as well and their help. They've been great assets to me. So you'll see the first part is the flooring. So again, just to rewind a little bit. It's the five companies that we spoke with, we need one more.
Yeah.
With the five companies that we've spoken with, it was unanimous across the board that we go over to the first floor with our, if you're going to spend money on it, their recommendation is first floor. The second floor is not ideal, wear and tear on the building and the subfloor, you have no idea what it's like under there. You know, and this equipment is, some of it's original, the flooring is certainly original to the, to the school. Some of it is 15 to 20 years old, we've had, we've piecemealed our upgrades when we've had them. So the first step is the removal of the dance floor installation of the new floor. So 800 dollars to take the floor out. We would go down to the concrete. We've done a little bit of research and know that the concrete is, is level and there's no work that's going to need to be done once we take the wood off of the floor. Mr. Smith was able to come up with, with a company here, a local company that's able to do it for 800 dollars, which I think is a great price. We had been quoted just, sort of ways where other companies have quoted anywhere between 6,000 and 9,000 just to take the floor out. So 800 dollars, I think is, is a fair price and we're excited for that. And then straight on strength with their, I have a sample. This is what the floor would, would look like, would feel like, so you can pass that around.
Is the horse mat you talked about?
No, not the horse mats. This is, this would be, you know, 2,500 square foot of rolled floor. So that comes in four foot sections. They roll, you know, put it on the concrete, seal it down, that cost is 26,000 dollars. I set, we separated out the bumper plate part, I tried to put a picture on there for those who don't know what bumper plate is maybe, but it is, it looks like a, a weight, but it's, it's really it's not lighter, it's just a whole 45 pound weight, but they're, they're not the steel weight, they're more rubberized weight and they're better for the, for the absorption and so forth. When you're doing Olympic type weights. Squat and clean and so on. So the bumper plate, we went through rope because we got really the best price. They were three or 4,000 dollars cheaper than anybody else, even through straight on strength. So that's why you see a separate rope quote in there for the 9,600 dollars for the bumper plates. Now, the weight equipment quote is something that in talking with Mr. Smith and Mr. Galat, you'll see the price on there, the quote was 82,000 dollars. Because of the pricing on that, we need to take that out to bid. So we've done that just in case, not, not to presume anything, but just to move the process along. If we do move forward with, with this project to get things moving in the right direction. Most of you know June and July are busiest months of the year. We have all of our athletes in there, working out from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM throughout the day. So our goal through this thing would be to, would get everything done and that, and people that I've spoken with, we can do that. But you'll, you'll see on there that quote is 82,000 dollars. We hope that's, I, we, I know for certain that this company, Stray Dog Strength is going to be bidding and I'm sure that's probably what their bid is going to be. We'll see what the other ones.
Yeah, and, and, and so the board knows is that there's a, there's a 50,000 dollar threshold for the bid on this. And, and so when the quotes start coming in over 50,000 dollars, you're forced to go through a full process. You advertise, you do the bids. We actually have the bid, because of timing, we have the bids opening scheduled for Thursday or next week, I think it's next, okay. And again, if, if the board were to say no, then we shut it down, but, but, but we wanted to keep it moving, just, you know, for the sake of getting this moving forward. So, you know, if, if the quotes are coming under that, board policy says you get three quotes. But when the quotes start coming in at or above that threshold, we go to the normal bid process.
So let me make sure I'm understanding this. So Stray Dog, the company is quoting the flooring that you're showing us.
Yes.
They came in on a quote so far on the entire, all the equipment, other than the, the plate.
Other than the bumper plates.
And so they can't get that into a reasonable area to get all the work done with one company?
Well, I mean, the bumper plate's literally just ordering them and they, they're going to ship them. I mean, it's an easy thing. Stray Dog is going to be the primary if they are, if their bid is lowest, if you go through that process, they would be the main company that would be doing the work. We literally, again, the bumper plate's what you put on the bars and you order those, they show up and there's no real assembly or anything to do with that. We're, Stray Dog came in at like 4,000 dollars for the same exact plates.
Surprise, even knowing, knowing they're quoting the rest of the stuff.
Correct, yep. So with the, but they're going to, again, we don't know who's going to get the weight equipment bid. Assuming that they're in the mix, they come up, they set it up, they deliver everything. They, they install everything and set everything up. So you'll see there on the last page, I just broke it down quickly, flooring, bumper plates and the, and the weight equipment, we're in, again, that 81,961 is going to be an estimate. I don't think it's going to be higher than that. So that's going to total us out at 118. The boosters again have committed 25,000 dollars to this project and I confirmed that at our meeting last evening that they're ready to move forward.
So, so this bottom line right here, we're subtracting 25,000?
25,000 dollars from that number.
Now, who, who worked with you on determining what equipment was going to be recommended for this?
Going to ask that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I just got asked that. Good question.
And I'm going to, you'll see here, I'm passing around a diagram. I apologize for my scribbles, but I wanted everybody, because it sort of looks like gibberish if you don't know what everything is. So I tried to label everything for you, so I'll wait until everybody has one of those and explain. But really, the people I've worked with were mainly Coach Christinger. Obviously, you guys know, he's been our strength and conditioning coach now for the last seven years. Has won numerous awards, is very, he does a great job with our kids and he's extremely knowledgeable. You know, he's talked to several people through his association. And then we also relied on the expertise of, of the five different vendors that we've talked with and what would they recommend? And so knowing the size of the room, it's about 2,600 square feet. This is what our room proposed would look like. So I'll just take you through it. Starting on the bottom, you'll see racks of dumbbells and then four lap pull-down stations there. They, those are going to, all, those are all new equipment, all right? The belt squat machine is currently upstairs. We would move that down into that corner there on the right or belt squat. Next, we'll, in the middle portion of the center and really takes up the majority of the space are double racks. So you'll see the, the black rectangles there. Those, each of those rectangles denotes a workstation. So you'd have eight workstations because you're, you have double racks. Now those four racks would be all brand new purchased within the equipment. That's what we've sent out for bid process. All right, so you'd have eight stations there. Then against the bar wall, you have single racks. Now those single racks are existent currently in the weight room. We have seven of them upstairs. We would leave either two up there or move two down to the athletic, old athletic office. So our community members could still use two racks. We have some people that, that do utilize that equipment. So we would have two racks, two single racks that our community members could continue to use. In that corner next to, so there's five more workstations there, sorry. Total of 13 workstations, so I'm going to give you some other numbers here in a minute about how many kids we get through here and all that kind of stuff. In the corner is our, the CyBAX and our cardio equipment. It's currently one machine there. We can move a treadmill down there, we can move a bike down there. Because again, our cheerleaders are, are going to be moving upstairs more likely than not. And we want to give them as much privacy as we can so we can put some cardio equipment in this room. There's enough space to do it that, you know, we'll have probably a bike, a cardio machine and that, that CyBAX cardio down there as well. And then the glute ham machines are down on the left-hand side, those four pieces, those would be brand new equipment as well. And, and those glute hams are really posterior exercises for your legs and they work multiple body parts. So imagine back probably when I was playing, if you want, you know, either leg curl where it's a single muscle, the glute hams are working multiple muscles. So bigger, faster, stronger, jump higher, farther, the glute hams are really a huge part of, of this project. So that's, that's really the setup of the room. And again, this was not only with Mike and, and his expertise, but the companies we spoke with as well. So, you know, and we move a lot of people through that room. So this, to me is an important classroom aspect. You know, currently this semester, we have 122 kids taking our strength and fitness class. We had 132 last semester. In addition to that, we have 60 middle school students. So on a daily basis, we're between 180 to 200 kids that we're servicing in this classroom, or PE class on a daily basis, Monday through Friday. That's just PE. That's just PE. All right, so athletically, we have between 550 to 600 kids, give or take at the high school level. We have about 280 athletes. And again, all seasons, not just in one season, across the board, so almost 50% of our kids, really good number. I've been in other school districts where it's been significantly lower. About half of our kids participate in the sport. So along with Mike as our head strength and conditioning coach, we have, we have, unfortunately, I just found out earlier today, Corey Morrow is leaving us. He just got offered the head coach, head strength and conditioning coach job at Rush. So full-time, they have a full-time, full-time job over at Rush. So he's, he's accepted that role. He was our assistant. So we're going to post that position and with Mike there every day, three to five, the assistant coach can be five to seven. I mean, there's going to be plenty of opportunity for all of our athletes, you know, to get through this room. So there's another 280 kids that it's going to impact at, at some point in time. So the, the PE class is nice because in the classroom setting, because a lot of those kids are obviously athletes and they can get some work done during the day. And that was the, the idea behind bringing Mike in as, as our PE guy, knowing what his strengths were. And, you know, those are our numbers and how it impacts. So again, to me, it's a classroom situation that, you know, we just haven't done much with it over, over the years. It needs, it needs the attention, it needs, it needs to be upgraded.
As PAC manager, how does that change access for the community? Because right now, we can't share that space, right, during the day.
Right. So it, it would during the day allow us to keep the upstairs weight room. I'll say this first, what this really does is give us a great opportunity to impact a lot of different places in the PAC. So we're going to be able to and we're going to work with, with this vendor, with Stray Dog or with somebody else. We've got a lot of pieces in that room upstairs on the other side where the cardio machines aren't now. All right, where the treadmills are and there's lots of, there's CyBAX equipment up there, that's all like wireless equipment. We, we have doubled up on every single piece up there. So when that was purchased 10 years ago or eight, nine, 10 years ago, everything was doubled up. It's very tight up there. It's hard to move around. So we can work with this company to help maybe move some of those pieces, rover some of those pieces out and create more space up there, maybe put some racks over on that side. Also clean up the old athletic office, which is if you go in there right now, it's a hodgepodge of all kinds of equipment. There's a leg press machine that's really outdated, there's two of them actually, they're huge pieces, they take up lots of space. And our, and then our P fit room as well. I think we can clean up all of these areas and make it more conducive and a more positive experience for our PAC members. They wouldn't necessarily have access to this space during the day, but they will have access to the upstairs piece. We'll be able to open that up more often than, than we are now. And they'll have just as much access to everything that they've become accustomed to and I think it'll be better.
Okay, where are the cheerleaders going?
So they're going to go back, essentially, we're going to flop spaces. I've talked with their coach. We went on to a grand tour in the PAC and looked all over the place and gave her some different options of what, where I could see things fitting. And she had some different opinions. She really, obviously she knows, they've been very fortunate, they have 2,600 square feet of space. Not a lot of cheerleaders groups have that, some are in the cafeteria or what have you. But we've said from the beginning, we don't want to compromise that. We were committed to making sure they have adequate space and they feel good about it. So really the biggest space that's comparable is the upstairs where we're moving this equipment from. And they, they would, you know, take that room as opposed to some of the other spaces that I was able to show her. But it's a cost to rehabilitate that room or update it. So we would need to purchase, we wouldn't necessarily need to purchase new flooring that, you know, as far as the base, that could stay. But they do need, if you go into the dance room now even, they've got these gymnastics mats for lack of a better word. They roll out, they're really soft, they're four or five inches thick and they can tumble, they can do all kinds of different things on them. We would need to purchase new mats for that, probably five or six of them. Now, they're about a thousand dollars each. So we have We would need to purchase new mats for that, probably five or six of them, now, they're about a thousand dollars each, so we have.
It's just a man, bro.
And then I, and, and speaking with the coach, one of her biggest concerns, obviously, sort of come full circle here, because in the very first part of this conversation, we talked about tearing the wall down. You know, she would love to build the wall up, and, and create a, a space where necessarily, some people couldn't peek around the corner, or sort of interfere in any way, shape, or form with her practices. So, that, we can't build, I've talked with Jim, worked with Jim on that, we've talked about installing some doors in, for them, for that purpose, where, and that would be shut off, so no one could interfere with it.
Between the two weight rooms upstairs that exist?
Yes.
Now those, how big would those doors be, they go to ceiling or their?
They would not go to the ceiling, they'd be about eight to ten feet tall.
Is she good with that, her privacy?
She was good with that, yeah. And then we even, I've talked with her about, like, after school, yeah, if we're moving some cardio equipment down, there really wouldn't be a use for any high school athletes to be on that side of the room while they're practicing. So we could close that all down, our high school athletes are gonna pretty much use this, they're not going to use any of the Cybex stuff.
Community's never in there from three to five.
No, it's, it's always shut down, so.
Okay.
And we would not, and obviously, it wouldn't be any of the hours that we would extend to the community, three to five is our time.
Right.
High school athletes.
I know for them, the mirrors are a big thing, so that would just be relocated, or keeping those, or do we need to purchase more?
Well, we would have mirrors on one side, so their current, the current way it's set up, once we get all those, if we got those racks out of there, there's mirrors on one side, if they face that way, they'd have one set of mirrors. I could certainly talk to Jim, one thing we've talked about is actually taking some of the mirrors out downstairs in this room, because we don't need them. So whether or not they can be used, I, I don't know the answer, but we would certainly, I would certainly look into that. And Jim, Jim is pricing out the doors.
Okay, and then as far as the additional purchase for the mats, would, are those on a schedule to be repurchased, like, is that something that is our normal, are they up for repurchase, or?
They need them, they, they, those mats that we currently have in there are, are pretty old, they need them.
Which mats?
The rollout mats you were talking about.
The gymnastics.
All those.
So that's something that, if we don't move the weight room, is that something that we'd be purchasing?
Then we'd be purchasing anyway, we would, we would need to purchase those.
So the current free weight side, that's the side we're flopping?
Yes.
Upstairs and downstairs, basically, so there would be no more dropping the heavy weights, five hundred pounds, where the whole room shakes?
Correct, where everything shakes, and if you're in the locker room below, or in the athletic office below, it shakes.
So roughly, hundred and, hundred and eighty students, two hundred students a day?
Yeah.
Every day, use the facility?
Yeah, that, that's a guarantee, because those, those are classroom type of numbers.
And the wall coming down was before we got into this expansion of whatever it is, because we, over the class course of three, four years, with the numbers of kids that wanna get in that class, supervision and sight lines have been an issue. And, and so we've all, we've been trying to open it up to help Mr. Christinger out, as far as with all the kids, supporting kids that he has. And, and again, we just can't take that wall down, there's too many internal things in there that's covered.
So his classrooms could still, he would still have students there in class, and they would only be on one side upstairs?
They wouldn't be upstairs.
They wouldn't be upstairs at all, they'd be in this room.
So his students would be using this downstairs?
Oh yeah, for sure.
And the, so the side where the ellipticals are, all that, that all stays there, except for a few things you said.
We're gonna move some, we're gonna look to move some of that equipment out, because we're, we're doubled up on everything.
Yeah.
It's just too, it's too congested.
And I would, I would suggest, I don't know if, somewhere along the line, the coaches have lost a film room. Because they've kind of taken that temp room, and, and they're, they're watching, they're watching game tape and stuff in there, and so, I don't know where, you know, not that we've got a theater but somewhere, a designed place where teams can go in and, and, and watch game film, and the theater class as well, if they need to, or whatever, they're giving it a little bit of a go.
We just used, wasn't it the old theater? That was the old, that's where we used to do it.
Right, and that's where they, I.
No, the PFIT, and that's where you.
I know basketball would do it still, and they're like, kids are laying all over the plate, it's not really set up right. And the spin bikes are too now. And the punching bags, they're in and out.
So, we're not really, like, throwing out old equipment or anything, like, we have a.
We certainly wouldn't be throwing it out, if we're looking to repurpose some space, then we would work with, you know, we don't have the wherewithal, and I would talk with Lou a little bit more about this, but how we would do it, if the, if the company wants to purchase it, or somehow, some way, I, we, I don't think we could put it out of the paper and sell it, we would, we would have to work with.
You have to go through a formal process on it.
Right.
No, you could, you said a company, what do you mean?
So, like, this Stray Dog strength company, they, they will take some trade-in, they will work, there's a, he, he's.
So there's certain legal threshold, I didn't look it up.
Yeah.
That if, if it was part of a trade-in on, on their equipment. Yeah, I'll look at the legal side of it today, we'll figure out that, and they could part of a form approval.
Is the timeline that you had given us a month ago, that still exists, or?
It, it still does exist, you know, again, our goal, June one, to have everything out rolling, you know, that, that, it's it's our busiest season, so I've, I've talked with some of these companies, you know, we could the one unknown we'll, we'll have until April thirteenth will be the, the bid process, but if we're able to move forward with this tonight, I know I would probably call Stray Dog tomorrow, and the boosters were ready to, to make their payment, and we could get the floor rolling, the floor needs to, we need to order that first, and foremost, anyway. I've obviously did not, I wanna do that without making sure that we're moving forward with it. But we could get the floor rolling, it takes about six weeks to come in, so we'd be looking at, you know, approximately late April, tear out of the floor, early May, install the floor, middle of May, and then the, the equipment would arrive shortly thereafter, it being installed.
What's the life expectancy of this?
You know, it, it's gonna be another twenty years, I mean, this stuff is really, it's, it's steel, they, they construct it all, they make their, this company makes it. And it's, none of us will be here one, one half of the week.
Hold on there.
You don't think you'll be sitting here? I hope we're all here in twenty years, that's the plan.
I think, so you said June, June one, like, go live, everything's in and running by June one?
Yes. It's aggressive, but I, it's, it's quick, it's, it's, there's no doubt, but I mean, we've been talking about it for a long time.
My, my concern is their availability, yeah, like, everything, the whole, what, you know, the, the issues of getting equipment in general.
Flooring.
Yeah.
He, he has been able to commit to it, it's actually improved since we first started talking with him, back in the late fall, early, early twenty twenty-two. He was like ten to twelve weeks out, he's now six to eight.
Now, supposing it's longer, how does that impact your athletes, because I've learned with construction stuff all the time, and.
Sure, and I, and I get it, I may, maybe I'm being too aggressive, but I, I, I.
They'll still be able to.
I will push hard for it to be June one, obviously, I can't control some of that stuff, but we're gonna push harder, and it really, what's nice about this aspect of it, if we were to tear down the wall, is, is what we talked earlier, now that's obviously causing a mess, and you're gonna have to move weight equipment, and we'd be displaced for a period of time. With, with us moving to the first floor, it would not hurt us in any way, shape, or form, because we would continue with everything upstairs as is. And then, when the room is done, we, we simply move down.
And chairs, I mean, the floor, I mean.
The cheerleaders won't practice until August, so we have, we have time, so, I mean, it really could be August one, obviously, we don't want it to be. June one is, is our goal, but.
So you needed a space, this is, the field house open?
On the field house, gym.
Yeah. If we had to.
She's gonna have tryouts in the gymnasium, as is the middle school, the middle school trial, and the middle school gym, they're coming up later this month. High school trial's gonna be in May, those will be in the high school gym anyway.
I mean, if we're talking about spending ninety thousand dollars, and it's gonna last us twenty thousand, or two, twenty thousand years, twenty years.
That'd be nice.
And, and we're going to have two hundred students through it per day, at a hundred and eighty days a year, times those twenty years, that's a lot of kids touching and using this equipment over, over a period of time, that.
We, we're gonna do graduation inside, so that's not gonna cause any.
I was just gonna remind you of that, too.
Yeah, for two weeks, it's no cuts, right?
Yeah, not a problem.
So these, these double units that are sitting in the middle floor?
Yes.
Those can be used at the same time, somebody on one side, and somebody.
Yeah, so part, part of the equipment piece, for sure, you're gonna have benches, and they're not really on here, you're gonna have a bench on each side coming out.
Because I was gonna ask about the number of benches that were on the court.
And so if you put with thirteen stations, just these stations alone, the three kids at a station, typically what you have, you have thirty-nine kids that will fit just on those, that doesn't include any of the glute hams, or kids doing dumbbells, or the belt squat. So, we can accommodate, this room's about three hundred square feet bigger than the free weight side upstairs now. So, you know, we fit forty, fifty kids with ease in there, this is, it's not gonna be a spacing problem at all with.
I noticed the plyos and medicine balls as well, we, we have those already, don't we?
We have some of those already, but again, I think on days, you know, Mike's gonna, will be days, he goes straight into the field house, and those, those will be stored more in the field house than they will in here, just for spacing, but we, he really wants some more of them to impact more kids, as many kids waiting in line. Or, you know, whether it's a medicine ball, or the plyo boxes.
Is there any way to phase this? I'll play devil's advocate both ways.
Sure.
Number one, is there any way to phase this so that we can reuse some things, or cut back on the order to some extent, I saw like fifty sets of resistance bands.
Right.
And the medicine balls, and the fact that the plyo boxes won't be in this room, do we hold off on some things and say, we're gonna cut back, I don't know, twenty to thirty thousand dollars to cut the spend?
Right.
Not that I'm saying that that has to be done, but is that?
If we were to do that, that's where I would start, I would start with plyo boxes and the medicine balls, but our, our idea behind it is to, to really be impactful, and with, with our classes and our athletes in mind, that if, you know, and, and we did repurpose some, obviously, these, these single racks, we all have, but we have them now, so we didn't need new racks there.
The boosters, are they spent?
They're spent at twenty-five, now again, I think, you know, next year, could they do another, could they do another fifteen or twenty possible?
Well, the only concern I have with phases would be, nothing's getting cheaper right now.
I agree, I agree, I, I just think, you know, I'm, I'm Mr. Optics, I think you guys that, you know, we're, we're looking at, you know, a, a new era of, of what, what can we do to cut costs, and I'll play the devil's advocate the other way. We spent twenty thousand dollars for a long-term cover for a year and a half, so, I mean, we're willing to spend twenty thousand dollars for something that's used by so few. We've spent a lot of money on some technology things that are used by many students, you know, and I don't wanna pick on any class, or any, anybody in particular. But we have to look at hands-on, hands-on, either equipment, technology, classroom time in front of a teacher, classroom time in a, in a weight training facility, so, you know, I'm, I'm playing devil's advocate both ways here, because, you know, that's what we're supposed to do, is try to weigh out all the options, so.
And this comes out of capital improvement, so this is not day-to-day, I mean, the, the difference.
Well, so, so we, we had it allocated for it this year. But it certainly is something that qualifies under our capital budgets, but, yeah.
And the day may come when, well, it should come, we're gonna probably have to discuss, do we want to allocate some of our general account funds into capital that would earmark that for future sustainability of our facilities versus, you know, letting that, that fund completely deplete, it, what, five years ago, I think, we did allocate a couple million and back into the capital fund, when was that?
Was that? Well, we used to kind of annually replenish that with, with, you know, if we, if we came in under budget, we would kind of take some of that surplus and we would move that over. We were trying to get to a threshold, so it'd be self-sustaining, we haven't done that in a few years. We just haven't had that kind of flexibility the last couple of years. I was gonna ask about one of the items up here.
Alright, I will.
Posterior chain combo.
Right, so that's, that's, that's part of the, your glute ham. The posterior chain combo, so again, that's like the leg, the, the focus is on the entirety of the leg, as opposed to like a leg curl, or a leg extension, where it's just.
That's just something I've not, didn't recognize the meaning to.
Yeah, I mean.
And, and it's high dollar.
It is, it's a big number.
Really.
I'm sorry.
Sixteen grams, really, fifteen, nine. Did we do an inventory of our current equipment that we have, to say, okay, we have how many box?
Yeah. The plyo boxes?
Yeah, plyo box, forgive, I mean, I know sometimes they're not just in that room, but equipment, as you said, gets removed from room to room, and it's all over the place. Did, did anyone go through, and I know you said Christinger and the vendors, Mr. Christinger and the vendors helped go through to determine what we need. Was there an internal inventory, kind of a, okay, we know we've got this, and, and maybe we don't need this many more, or?
Right, and, and we did, we did do that, and we start, you know, this, this quote originally from, from Stray Dog, Stray Dog was like a hundred eighty-five thousand, just for the equipment, now, that's in like a dream type of scenario, where when he grows on trees, and you have four thousand square feet of space, and you could really, you know, that's with pirate logos all over the, I mean, this is a sort of a bare-bones, straightforward, this, we need the equipment, that floor's got a little bit of red in it, the benches are gonna be red, there's gonna be some splashes of red, but if you go out there on Twitter, on social media, and you see some of the new weight rooms going in, everybody's got their logos all over the place, and I mean, that stuff is extremely pricey. We don't have any of that, we don't have any flash, we have what we need, and, you know, we feel like this is the, what we need in, in order to to service all of our kids, so we did go through, we looked at, like, Dr. Thompson, yeah, we have some plyo boxes, we have some medicine balls, not all the kids can use them. You know, there's lots more, some weight time, and some time that they're not active, because they're having to wait, so.
So this list is whittled down from like your ideal, perfect world, this is what.
I could send you all the original, the original one, and it'd be like, yeah, the dream list, and it was, was like, wow, okay.
If we choose to go forward to one of my, I would like to see the purge plan as well.
Yeah.
Because, you know, in the past, we went from square box TVs to, to, you know, whatever, you know, the, the thinner versions and all that. We had storage of these box TVs in these areas, it just, I mean, it was just horrific, and so, you know, there should be a purge plan as well, right, that's pretty specific, so that we can, you know, be streamlined and cleaned up, and stored in a way that, that, that stuff's not laying around.
Right, agreed a hundred percent, I think that just gives us the wherewithal to do that, and, and the motivation, so to speak, to do that, to really go in and and clean all these spaces up, and again, and max, max them out for not only our kids and our students, but, but the PAC will see an improved offering of stuff as well, because we're able to get rid of some of the, the things that no one uses.
Well, it makes it even more comfortable for kids to even try it out, because it is away from the community a little bit.
Yeah.
Back to one of the things we talked about, I, I noticed on here on the, on the Stray Dog quote, on their third page, it does mention a twenty-eight hundred dollar discount on trade-in, so if you're going to, we mentioned, we, we talked about trading stuff in, instead of legal jargon. This, this is discounting at twenty-eight hundred dollars, because they're looking at a trade-in, so. If we can do that, great, and anything else, it would be fantastic.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I don't know what their market value is either, so.
Right. Um, I think, thank you for presenting and putting all this together, it's helpful, I think, to see it all broken out like this, into each section, and each category, and a lot of time and effort is gone into this project. We, I think the original conversation probably started last, maybe late spring, May or June, when the fundraisers started for the park.
Yes.
The auction, the raffle.
And there's new leadership at boosters.
Yeah, so we, Missy Moon, who's been our booster president now for five or six years, she stayed on this year, even though her daughter graduated last year. Is, is moving on, she's not gonna be part of the booster club anymore, that, that's pretty standard operating to you, when your, when your kids aren't part of the district anymore. So Christie O'Car is going to be our president, Gary Cox will remain as our vice president, and Mark DiStoffo will remain as our treasurer, so we're looking for a secretary, if anybody's interested, so. But the, I'll give a quick plug, the golf outing is May fifteenth, that best country club, praying for good weather, we had a beautiful Sunday, May day last year, and hopefully we get the same.
So, what are we looking for in terms of tonight, are we looking to make any decisions tonight, are we looking for? So what are we looking for in terms of tonight? Um, we looking to make any decisions tonight? Are we looking for?
Tonight, I guess, I guess we're opening bids in the next week or so. I mean, some direction that says, hey, go ahead with the with the bid opening. Uh, or, hey, this isn't what we're looking at. Uh, and then uh your real vote would take place at the next board meeting when we voted on the equipment. That's uh what you so choose, so. Um, I I think they probably want an approval moving forward with flooring to start on that.
If we could do that, I'd, I'd recall tomorrow and and with the booster club um ready to move forward with their portion, they they would essentially, that twenty five thousand dollars would allow the floor to be ordered and uh we could start at least getting that.
So that would require a board approval.
Right.
Uh, because it's it's in excess of of the the uh, it's twenty twenty six, fifteen thousand dollar threshold that the board policy has to approve.
So you need a motion.
Need a motion to do.
To, to approve the flooring.
For the floor.
To approve it.
Yes.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the flooring. It's.
Is there any more question, discussion?
So, so the motion is to, this is a bar, this is a transcript to approve the twenty six thousand dollar uh quote from stray dog uh to do the flooring in the current dance room.
As recommended by the.
Do we need to vote on moving forward with bids and stuff too?
I think.
Or we just, they just do it?
You can get bids without us.
Yeah, we could, we could do bids. We we can't, we can't accept bids until the board will vote on those.
So, um, roll call please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
This is Trebsker?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
This is Foley?
Yes.
This is Light.
Yes.
You might have to learn how to.
Whatever it takes.
So, um, okay, those, the discussion I think we had and. Okay, um, discussion on policy fifty four twenty, you already kind of talked about.
Yeah, I talked about it. Here's a copy of this. Now, we we've approved the first reading and typically we do during a work session after the first reading, we go over it and then they adjust what you want. We'll have a second reading our next board meeting. So it's a little bit compressed on this little policy. So I just want to give you a hard copy and show you the suggested changes. If you want any edits of that, let me know. Um, or if you see anything, then I'll, I'll put on the next board agenda for approval. Uh, with any changes that you guys suggest. Yeah, I I do explain it. On the first reading. Thanks, that's it.
Okay, so those are our two new items and then um moving on with our standing items, we have curriculum instruction. Any updates, questions, discussion there at the moment? Budget, any? Any updates on Morris? That was the one that was rescheduled from a couple of weeks ago.
Yes.
Yes, unfortunately, I'm not able to attend. Yeah, I know I had tentative on there.
It's and we're, it's zoom, correct?
Uh, would you like, we're gonna do it in person?
In person's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, this is the one that was scheduled from a couple of weeks ago. I was able to and now with this new date and time, I'm not able to because of work, unfortunately. So, okay. I get it. Or governance, um, anything here? I know we were to talk about our board retreat, which is the twenty eighth, so I think all set. Does anyone have anything else to go to the order? And safety and security. And technology.
Approve the.
Update.
Maybe off topic, but technology stem is just the mind. Our house is coming to a quick end with a potential for real estate. Um, whatever at the end of May, an open house for the community at the end of May. So I look forward to inquire on that. But we are really truly searching for a house.
If anybody's looking for a house, they want it sold cheap.
We thought we had one and we realized it's been sold in December.
Well, it's up to you guys.
What's um, are are the kids gonna be, just different, are the kids involved in the real estate part of that, the selling and the financial part of that too?
So, so, yeah, and as we're looking to, we're trying to make the the trade, you know, sell the one and purchase another so we can start another project. Um, again, it doesn't have to necessarily be sequentially. We just wanna make sure that buying something, we like to find something to start the new curriculum next year. Um, but there's a kind of an overlapping time that we're sitting here trying to market the other.
Are are we looking for something that maybe is a little slightly less involved?
Cause that was a total, that was a complete.
Yes, I know Lucy went through a home on Lane um about a week ago. I haven't heard from her since, that's last Thursday. We'll just be on the look, that's kind of how we found our last property, essentially, before the house was then.
When is it gonna go up on the market, do you know?
What'd you say?
When, when do we expect it to go up, up the old house on the market?
May, end of May or June.
Well, could we maybe do our June work session, maybe meet there as a board and use it as a maybe a media opportunity where we just go there, we go through it, Harold's there. And and then we come here for the meeting right after that.
Work session?
Yeah.
I think it's pretty great all the things they've done.
Yeah, as long as the weather's not bad.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can talk it up.
Okay, I like that idea. Definitely. So I'm glad to hear that we're looking during another one and purchasing another house that would be contractable. We should be going, I think, for our students.
Okay.
Um.
I just wanted to put another point, the housewarming thing of this, we've gone from sending one student um to HVAC with full certification this year to fourteen next year. So things are kind of popping on the career pathway side. Can't drag on Rita so good enough. Um, also, some partnerships with school districts, uh while we, we were gonna increase it by fifty percent. Um, and we have worked on an opportunity with STNA that rather than students have to take away from their high school schedule for entire semester to walk out for STNA. Um, Lakeland and area nursing moms helping us to do a two week sprint on the coursework. It's pretty intense, eight hour days for the kids. And then do their lab, their uh lab clinical experience and to walk out with an STNA. So just some things are like endless possibilities. Things are really popping. I think our relationships with other districts just connecting and um our connections around the state, the ones from others who have done things before us. It it just sound like it's a, it's a season things are popping right now.
So many opportunities out there, right? Because you're taking advantage of us.
There's about eight different certifications kids are getting right now. We'll be in IT. Um, and I think I shared with you and I have taught, we shared that the high school uh piece, but if all goes well with that apprenticeship application, not pre-apprenticeship, but we would be the hub of an apprenticeship here. Not an approval, but and then things in maintenance, things in high demand jobs with maintenance and IT. Uh, we would be the apprenticeship site. So our kids that would have the need to either get that certification or address for graduation. That would be another avenue for graduation, showing one of those same house certifications and not have to rely on going to an internship or transportation to get there, to be done here, so.
The um, the only, uh, the other item is that's not on here that um we will have on our work on our next board meeting. We'll talk more about it. I think it's the appointment for the Perry Rec and Senior Center. Because we did have one, um, we received one applicant or one interested individual and called applicant a letter of interest. So we do have one individual. And I think we as a board need to um have that time to review that and our goal is to appoint someone by the end of April.
Right.
By our next meeting. So hopefully within the next two weeks, we get a couple more letters of interest, so keep.
Okay, what if you don't? Well, we should be getting at least one, one, maybe two more that I've been talking to as old, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm assuming it'll be one and not the two, but.
If we don't, um, I mean, in my mind, because it's written in the bylaws that we have to appoint two people. If one is a community member and one has to be a board member until further notice, then
That's right.
I think we would have to go that route if we had to.
That's fine.
Um, but we can have that conversation too and talk about that.
Yeah, I think, I think I I was told today that someone's still gonna send it in.
Okay. I'd like to have that finalized by our um schedule next physical meeting, so that would be great. Yeah.
What do we give the eleventh of the date?
Yeah, we did. Okay, um, so, um. I am going to motion that we move to executive session for Senate Higher Advice Code Section one two one point two two G one. I hereby move that the board adjourned executive session for the purpose of considering the employment of a public employee or official. Um, we will not be conducting any other business after executive session. And I would like to invite Dar, invite the master of the motion and okay, I would like to invite, hmm, this is like playing Red Rover. Dr. Milchuski. Into executive session.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
This is Foley?
Yes.
This is Lightig?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Okay, no other business. We are finished with.